Good evening, everyone. It is a full house tonight. So I wish it would be this full every Monday. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council to order. And if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Hey, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kearns.
Present.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Motney.
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
I am here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Milowamway.
Here. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation for International Understanding and World Peace Week, as requested by the Administration Department. And I understand that there are several people who are here to accept the proclamation. If you could make your way to the podium. And I will read the proclamation. And after I've read it, I will present it to you and then give you an opportunity to say a few words if you'd like.
Yes, thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome. A proclamation for International Understanding and World Peace Week, June 12th through June 16, 2023. Whereas since the inception of the Rotary Foundation in 1965, the Rotary Friendship Exchange Program of Rotary International has encouraged people to travel abroad and share information with their counterparts in other countries. And whereas Rotary Friendship Exchange Team members spend two to six weeks studying the culture, people, and the practices of his or her profession by counterparts of the other country. And whereas the Rotary Friendship Team members fund the round trip airfare and the Rotary Clubs in host countries provide lodging, meals, and other travel costs, allowing the opportunity for participants to become acquainted with the people, customs, and culture of the host country. And whereas this year, the Rotary Friendship Exchange Team will be welcoming Mr. Narendra Kumar Jayan and Mrs. Pratiba Jayan, Mr. Sukdev Singh Guman, and Mrs. Kiran Guman from India Rotary International District 3040, visiting our area from June 12th through June 16, 2023, and studying our country's institutions, economy, and culture while observing how their own professions are practiced here. Now, therefore, I, Mbokamulamwe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim June 12th through 16th, 2023, as International Understanding and World Peace Week.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the proclamation, Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council. My name is Surindra Sethi. I am the Chairperson of Friendship Exchange District 6490. Now Rotary was founded in 1905 by an attorney Paul Harris in Chicago. Rotary is an international service organization with about 1.4 million members in 210 countries, organized in more than 46,000 clubs worldwide, which are grouped in 529 districts. Our district 6490 is one of those districts. And this district is east central Illinois. The district is located in 26 counties. And we have about 50 clubs. And there are about 3,000 members. So in 1965, Rotary established the Rotary Foundation to support educational and humanitarian programs worldwide, which included international exchanges. There are numbers of, you know, different types of exchanges. And Friendship Exchange is one of them. The object of Rotary Friendship Exchange is to build goodwill, foster peace, strengthen international friendship, expand international understanding, and create a more global community worldwide. So Rotary's most powerful tool for building peace in the world is Rotary Friendship Exchange. In our days, just imagine, you know, 559 or, you know, districts are 46,000 clubs. How many exchanges take place, you know, each year? And that adds up at a grassroots. It's not, you know, the professionals who come and go, you know, it's grassroots people. And there is no affiliation with any political body or religion or anything. It's just the common people from one country to another country. So this year, like Mayor announced, you know, we have exchange from India District 3040. And with me, I'm supposed to have four, but I, at this time, I have only two. They just arrived from India and we picked up from the O'Hare Airport. The other two, their flight is delayed. They will be reaching here at midnight. So first here is Mr. Jan and Mrs. Jan. And their host is Julie and Bob Dobski. Please, can you say, stand? Julie and Bob Dobski. Oh, I'm sorry. No, their host. I say, I take it back. No, their host is, they are Neil and Sharmee. Yeah, Sharmee. Neil and Sharmee Shah. They are also residents of Bloomington. And the two that are expected here at midnight, their host is Julie and Bob. So they, so that's, you know, and they will be in our area. Bloomington Normal, we have six clubs, by the way, in Bloomington Normal area. And the total in the district are about 50 clubs. And like I said, you know, they are in the central, no, east central Illinois and 26 districts, counties. So it's my pleasure to present to at this time, and he has some gift for Mayor and Members of City Council. And also, as a tradition in India, they put the garland as a symbol of respect. So that's what he will be doing. You can go. Thank you very much for this opportunity to introduce our team and the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is a recognition of Boards and Commissions' appointment and reappointments, as requested by the Administration Department. Madam Clerk?
The first reappointment that we have is Jerome Keller to the Building Board of Appeals. And we have Cindy Timmaroon to Cultural Commission, Paul Sarnett to the Historic Preservation Commission, John Eltrick to the Historic Preservation Commission, Uma Calsum to Human Relations Commission, Brenda Guest, Japan Sister Cities Committee, David Lewis to the Planning Commission, this is when we switch to the appointments. Let's see, William Paradoti to the Planning Commission, a reappointment of Anna Patino to the Planning Commission, reappointment of Lauren Pruder to the Transportation Commission, a reappointment of Alicia Saunders to, or Sanders to Transportation Commission, and last, the reappointment of Tim Foley to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I do believe that we have a couple of people present if you'd like to recognize them.
Okay. So amongst those folks who are present, because I couldn't tell who is here, if you could please stand so we can give you a nice round of applause. Let's see Bill there. Alicia Sanders. Thank you very much for your service in the City of Bloomington. We really appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. So first, if I could just announce that we did have public comment emailed by three individuals that were provided to council before the meeting today. The first one was Kurt Hudson, then Kurt Holland, and then Dean Fletcher. And to speak today, we have roughly, I'd say, 14. So if you'd like to start with your statement, we'll call forward first Andy Kaufman.
Okay.
And then to follow, Paul Sarnett.
Okay, sounds good. And since we have 14 people and three minutes apiece, right? So hopefully, folks will be, you know, maybe be under three minutes so that we can hear from everyone. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the City Council. It is also an opportunity for the City Council to listen and hear diverse points of view, to maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views. Speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the City Council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased.
Right. First up, Andy Kaufman.
Hi, my name is Andy Kaufman. I've met with nearly all of you. And it's my honor to be here, to be considered, to have our agreement considered. Thanks, first and foremost, to this group and to the staff, to Billy, to Tim, to Ellen, to Melissa. We love our community. I've been born and raised here. This is where we're at. This is where we want to invest. And I'm speaking on behalf of many others who care and want the same thing. So many of you ran on revitalization of downtown. You genuinely care about our community also, as do all the members that are really here. And while we may come down on different sides of this, I'm honored to be here and I'm honored to have a room full of people that genuinely care and that have an opinion about how this should go forward. So I'll keep my time short, just to a minute. Thank you for considering our proposed agreement. We'd be honored to have your vote. Thanks.
All right. Next up, we have Paul Sarnett. And then to follow, Stacy Duraco.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. I'm Paul Sarnett, and I've had the privilege of serving Bloomington in the role of Preservation Architect on the Historic Preservation Commission for the last six years. And tonight was reappointed to serve for another three. Additionally, I'm a small business owner here in downtown Bloomington, who has been entrusted with the legacy of architectural design firms stretching back to a time when much of downtown was rebuilt after the Great Fire of 1900. And I've been an active advocate, advocate, excuse me, for continued development of our community for as long as I've lived here. Tonight, I wanted to first address the future of downtown Bloomington as it relates to 402 East Washington. First, I simply want to tell you that I'm excited about the potential development. Downtown has suffered from vacancies and what I call missing teeth. For so long, the developers, entrepreneurs, and investors think twice about survivability and viability. We need this kind of development to solve housing issues, to bridge the boundaries to downtown, and to overall further the vision for greater lovable ability of our city. When I study and advise other communities, particularly those communities with significant historic fabric, and about future development plans, the same kinds of conversations we're having here tonight are usually followed up with a lot of nostalgic conversation about businesses and buildings that once were anchors of vitality and are simply no longer. However, those conversations often never reach fever pitch until there is a vision, until there are resources, until there is opportunity strong enough to catalyze reinvestment. And I think this is one of those rare opportunities where the vision, resources, and opportunity could finally be in alignment. Having said all this, while it would be out of line for me to speak anything about TIFs or prevailing wage or anything related to the project otherwise, I do feel uniquely qualified to talk about the preservation aspects of this project in context of the overall development. I toured the facility at 401 East Jefferson, currently occupied by the City of Refuge. And I wanted to better understand the integrity of the facility. In my review, I'm sad to say that it's reached a point where disinvestment is more than probable, regardless of the outcome. While there are a few elements that have been remarkably preserved, such as much of the stained glass, so the pews, some of the interior millwork, the costs required to substantively improve or even maintain a facility of this magnitude are probably well beyond any group likely to occupy it. For instance, the metal coping has begun rusting and would require reconstruction of large portions of the parapet. The repointing that was completed previously was done with such a strong mortar that it's exploding the brick. And it's leaving holes in walls. Floor ceilings and walls generally throughout need serious repairs from moisture and impact damage. In short, the unfortunate reality is that this facility's fate is all but certain. However, I choose, and I hope as you as representatives of the public also choose, to view this in the context of potential for downtown Bloomington and that the expected growth impact to this project would provide could ultimately outweigh and help to preserve the remainder of downtown as a whole.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Stacy Duraco. And then to follow will be Zach Carlson.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stacy Duraco, and I live at 305 Grant Road. My family and I have lived in the neighborhood for over 10 years, and we're currently continuing to expand our family. My request for you today is to honor the commitment that the council made in 2021 and that you approved the bid in front of you tonight, including the base bid and the additive alternatives 1, 2, and 3. The city promotes equity, and by not approving the entire bid, we are leaving out part of the neighborhood. And part of this neighborhood is at the end of my driveway. That outlet is being excluded. So again, my request for you today is to simply honor the bid, including the base and the additive alternatives 1, 2, and 3. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Zach Carlson. And then to follow, Mike Rakes.
Hey there. My name is Zach Carlson. I'm Ward 6. I want to first say, I'm glad to see everyone in orange here. My father was a laborer. I followed in his footsteps, became a union man myself. And a few weeks ago, I was here too, saying, and many of us were here, with our opposition or critique or displeasure with these market developments. Today, I stand in full opposition. This needs to be struck down and whole. There was no change in the proposal, not even lying to us, saying it is high market rate, not luxury. Luxury stayed in there. Then he was the decency to lie to us. They lied to you in front of your faces. They lied to Tim. Tim had a, no, sorry, not Tim. Billy, I bet. They lied to you, and you had to lie to us. That doesn't feel good. That's shameful. Further, according to GIS data, in areas just east, north, and south of it, 30% to 70% of people pay 50% of income to rent. They make less than or equal to $46,000 median. Phase 8 to 18% unemployment, 26% to 36% live below the poverty line, and 15% to 23% of housing units are vacant. What will this do to those, to that housing? It will jack up the prices. It will raise rents. It will displace folks, and it won't even pay union wages. Friends and neighbors, I am friends and neighbors with downtown business owners. I know them well. I care for them. I want to see them to continue to succeed. I love downtown. I'm here during the Strong Towns cleanups, the Revivalist cleanups, just here yesterday. I want to see downtown succeed. I want to see huge amounts of money poured into it. I don't want to see $18 million of luxury housing subsidized by the city. If they want luxury housing, they can pay for it themselves, including the property at market rate. All I ask is that you vote no. This isn't good for us. I want to see massive investment in local public housing, not with HUD. That's always right. Take local public housing. We can do it. The legalities are there. I want to see cooperative housing. I want to see land trusts, all non-market solutions to our housing issues. And these, and then these, when developed, they start at perhaps a median to low market rates. And because they're not tied to the market, over time, they become affordable. They become low, very low, beyond submarket rates because they don't care about making a profit. They don't care about making, charging $3,000 a month for a two-bedroom apartment that is the C2 building. That is what is going to be put up along with Airbnbs. We don't need that. So please, again, vote no, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Right. Next up, we have Mike Rakes. And then to follow, David Loomis.
Good evening. My name is Mike Rakes, and I work in Bloomington and reside in Ward 4. I'm here to speak in opposition to the redevelopment agreement for 402 East Washington. I speak in opposition because there is no language in the agreement for the use of local labor or requirements for contractors to use apprentices or requirements to pay a minimum wage as determined by the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act. Economic development is important, and it's doable to have tools that are both good for business and good for workers. They are not mutually exclusive. After the last council meeting, when the agreement was tabled, Mr. Ozenga, as the developer, was interviewed by local media and asked about the prevailing wage issue. He's quoted, "All we're asking for on this project and on all projects we serve is the continued ability to invite both union and non-signatory companies to participate here. We live in a capitalist culture and economy. There is zero, no, not one requirement in the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act that requires union labor to work on prevailing wage projects." To Mr. Ozenga's point, if prevailing wage was required, they still would be able to invite both union and non-signatory companies to participate. Mr. Ozenga knows this because they're working on a project at North Normal, just five miles from here, that requires the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act. So why are they opposed to have work under the same requirement, just two blocks to our east here in downtown Bloomington? As far as living in a capitalist culture and economy, I see it very ironic that the developer has their handout buying land that belongs to the residents of Bloomington for $1. If the land was privately held, would someone sell it for a dollar in a capitalist economy? A private company is telling us the project will be sunk if they're required to pay prevailing wage. And if they don't receive $4.5 million back of their investment, that sounds more of a socialistic culture than a capitalistic culture to me. The developer wants it both ways. As a business manager for the Electrical Workers Union and President of the Livingston and McLean County Building Trades, I understand the importance of economic development. In the past, the developers always reaped the benefits. Let's change this and give some protection for local construction workers. Please vote no to this agreement and work on incentive packages that are pro-development and pro-worker. Thank you.
Next up, we have David Loomis. And then to follow, Tom Kirk.
Good evening. My name is David Loomis, and I'm in Ward 3 in the City of Bloomington. And I recently retired as Professor of Economics at Illinois State University. And I own my own business, Strategic Economic Research, LLC. I'd like to speak in favor of the housing development. That's a subject of vote this evening for the following reasons. First, we need more housing in Bloomington Normal. Jobs and economic prosperity in Bloomington Normal has created a shortage of housing, and we plainly just need more housing in the community. We need more housing that's affordable, and this development will bring 24 townhouses and a five-story apartment building. Most other proposed housing developments are on greenfields or farmland at the outer edges of our community. And this project is unique and much harder to build, and therefore, I think qualifies for the assistance that has been proposed. In my analysis, the $18.5 million project will result in about 200 jobs, about $12 million in labor income, and add $20 million to the local economy. I'm not speaking for or against the prevailing wage, but if prevailing wages were going to be a requirement, that should have been negotiated during the time that the development agreement was put together and not imposed later on. And so I feel like it's unfair, at this point in time in the development, to go back and require prevailing wages. With that, thank you very much for your time.
All right. All right. Uh, next up we have Tom Kirk and then to follow will be, uh, Matthew Tosco.
I'm Tom Kirk, resident of Bloomington. And, um, I attended the, the meeting, you know, prior to this and I was listening to what was going on and I thought, I, I really thought that the, this was presented, you know, as a yes, the, the staff did their, did their research, homework and whatnot. And this is the property that brings in no money right now. And should it go through? Should it be presented? And goes to as is, we're looking at like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year income and taxes. Where right now it, it's doing nothing. Um, when we look at development, I call a lot of properties that the cost maybe to get it shovel ready isn't worth the price of investment. I bought many properties for a dollar. I've been paid to take properties and I clean those lots and I open it up for development. And if somebody is going to build a project or, or do something where there's no profit to be made, that person's going to go broke. There has to be profit. People have to make money to do different things. When we're talking about area standards, less than like a prevailing wage, area standard or prevailing wage is basically a union negotiated wage. Um, you know, they, they work for it. They, they put things in place and then that, that's your area standard. So when you hear, hey, that they're paying less than area standards, those, those guys are terrible. No, they're just not paying union wage. You can take competitive pay and you can have somebody that's less than a prevailing wage because of competitive market. You know, people don't have as much pension liabilities as these guys have. People don't have, training programs are expensive, but they're still as good. So the union and non-union, I could care less. I've been union, I've been non-union. I've worked with a lot of these guys. Some of them the best I've ever worked with, some of them the worst. This, this, this plan's important because I think it's also sending the message like, look, we need development. And I also really believe in balance and what's happened is because of different things, because of government and unions, we're knocked out of balance now. Um, there was a lot of passion in the meeting and we were talking about, you know, we want to get this lower housing. If you involve a prevailing wage, the, the housing projects aren't going to happen. And if we think that, oh, let's put prevailing wages out there, would you guys put prevailing wages on everything you do at your home? You, you wouldn't. It knocks things, it knocks things out of balance. To keep work lo- uh, local, if you are a signatory general contractor, you cannot use non-union people. You wouldn't believe how many jobs I have not been able to bid on in my backyard because the person that was doing it was union. I can't bid on it. So if you want somebody to have the opportunity to do union or non-union, Catalyst Construction or Andy uses both. And you can be apples to apples and have lower costs. It's, it's, it's smoke and mirrors. It's a, like, it's a lot of talk. I didn't come here to debate union or non-union. This is an important project and you're going to send a message of future development that other people can, there's, there's a lot of people here. It's all for, they're all for a group.
Next up, we have Matthew Tosco and then to follow Patrick Hoben.
Hi, I'm Matt Tosco, Ward six resident and local Communist Party Club member. And I have some thoughts to share regarding the proposed development on East Washington Street. So this was tabled at the last meeting pending further discussion and it came back completely unchanged. I gotta say, these catalyst guys sure do talk pretty. Saying they want to benefit Bloomington while wrapping their blinding greed up in the flowered deceits of godly speak. But all they've really said is that if this council won't full pucker kiss their butts flying in the face of labor and our most urgent housing needs, they will take their little ball and go home. This project they're trying to ram through stands to hurt the people already living here by blatantly further gentrifying the area, pushing more and more of those suffering the day-to-day and month-to-month brunts of the much, much touted free markets devastations out of their homes and out of the area. With all the new McMansion subdivisions being rapidly built, spiking existing home prices and new luxury rentals already springing up, including the old C-two East site owned by these same wolves in sheep suits, providing dignified, low-cost housing for the existing working class of Ward six and beyond is a more urgent priority than increasing my tax base with this proposed crap. Let's face it, those who say buying into gentrification scams like this and creating low-cost housing are not mutually exclusive are gaslighting us because the latter never happens to any truly transformative degree, full stop. The things our communities are asking for, from union labor prevailing wage requirements to inclusion of low-cost units and no Airbnbs are not unreasonable. These catalyst guys tend to make major bank off their projects, including what we're talking about just means they're making a little less major bank. Despite everything the city is willing to do for them, they have returned here today unwavering in their pursuit of the greatest greed. I would hope this council has the courage, the wisdom and the compassion for the people of Bloomington to look these gentrifier tools of said greatest greed square in the eye and say, no. If you want the land for a dollar, four point five million in TIF rebates and the disgustingly generous incentives we've offered you, you will play ball. You will play ball and make some concessions that uplift the existing working class of Ward six and beyond with guarantees of low-cost units and local union prevailing wage labor, or you can kick rocks. It's simple, it's reasonable and it's doable. Thank you.
Next. Next up, we have Patrick Hoben and then to follow will be Caleb Martin.
Hello, Patrick Hoben. I'm the CEO of the Bloomings Normal Economic Development Council. I came here tonight to speak in favor of the project and actually trying to push as many housing projects as possible. I thought it would be pertinent for you all to do an update on our housing study numbers when it came to demand. Uh, as many of you know that we did a housing study at the EDC, uh, back in April of twenty twenty-two. And at that time, the housing study demand for the area said that we were short about forty-three hundred housing units. That did not include Rivian. So since then, I went ahead and updated the numbers to include Rivian's current employment of seventy-seven hundred employees. Um, from there, we ended up figuring out that fifty-five percent of the people that work at Rivian actually live in Bloomington Normal zip codes. That includes all of McLean County. That means forty-five percent of those employees are taking dollars home outside of our community to Peoria, Morton, um, Clinton, I think half the town of Clinton might work there. So those are all dollars that could be going into our restaurants, into our local, um, retailers as well. Um, so running the new numbers, showing that with the fifty-five percent, um, it's going to be anywhere between seventy-one hundred units is what the demand is, all the way up to eighty-five hundred units. I believe this is for seventy-two. Um, so we're, we're getting a dent there. I think total plan for the area is probably about an estimated one thousand units. Um, we're still very far behind. Um, so the sooner that we can get more units, the sooner we can get more workers in our area and keep our economy spinning.
All right. Yep. Next up, we have Caleb Martin and then to follow Dean Fletcher.
Good evening. Uh, this is my first time here. I'm going to shake out the nerves. Right. Um, I'm Caleb Martin. I live in Ward four. Uh, Mr. Danenberg, I wanted a chance to meet you in person beforehand. I didn't get to, but it's good to, to see you and meet you. Um, thanks for listening. I want to just, uh, implore the council to vote yes for the East Washington development. Um, for the simple reason that are we okay with leaving this a vacant for an unforeseeable number of years in the future? Um, I, I'm a townie. I've been here for thirty-three of my thirty-five years of my life and um, it certainly hasn't been vacant that whole time, but we know what it was before. We know what it is now. And, um, we've seen the reputation of what these developers have done at C-two East. Um, it's, uh, and what they've done at Grove and Prairie and I think those are beautiful developments. It is revitalizing the downtown area. And they intend to continue to do that, I think, with this development. I realize it does not, uh, cover every breadth of people, not, not everybody's going to live in this building, just like certain people can't live in my house and I can't live in other houses I want to live in. Uh, we all fit into different pieces of this community. Uh, this is one piece of the puzzle. And, um, I, as much as everybody want to see everybody housed in a way that, um, that they want and can, um, but that's just not possible in the world we live in. Um, and so I think to move the needle forward, I think we should vote yes on this development to provide some housing and, um, yeah, simply that, vote yes. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up we have Dean Fletcher and then to follow Bob Sampson. We have Dean Fletcher present. Okay. Uh, so we'll call forward Bob Sampson.
Uh, members of the council and mayor, I'm Bob Sampson. I live in East Gate at four oh three Grant Road. We were among many in our neighborhoods suffering damage in the June twenty twenty-one floods. We were heartened when the city council strongly supported addressing the source of the damage, combined storm and sanitary sewers via accelerating the Lucas Colton project as two years ago. While we are pleased that the current resolution you vote on tonight contains much of the neighborhood, it excludes some parts and in our opinion fails to live up to the commitment made by the council in the fall of twenty twenty-one to address and solve the problem in one project rather than postponing a significant or significant portions what are confusingly termed additives until possibly twenty twenty-six at the earliest. We asked you to consider appropriating the necessary two plus million to complete the entire project. All the additives as sent out for bid, especially as costs in twenty twenty-six or later are likely to exceed any amount the city staff seeks to save in this present pair of proposal. In conclusion, let me thank you for your continued concern for Bloomington's infrastructure problems and the support you have given this project in the past.
Thank you. Uh, next up we have Gary Lambert and then to follow, uh, Darlene Weber.
Good evening. I am Gary Lambert. I listened to the discussion last meeting. And I have to say, I was horribly disappointed by some. We had some members who made a major deal out of the union. If we pay prevailing wage, they have an education program. That's good. And then a week ago Sunday, we had an excellent article in the Panograph. Somebody wrote in and it broke out what that really meant to pay prevailing wage. Sixty-one dollars an hour in some sense, if I recall right. And out of that, ninety cents was going to go for education. And we had people here on this council holding up the flag, but by golly, we gotta have that union wage. There is no law requiring it. If you let people apply pressure, you're going to add multiple millions to the project. If it gets done at all. We've seen from the previous mayor, his grandiose ideas of what he was going to use all these properties for, they're set and empty. Now, if you've got somebody willing to step up, take on the challenge and run in to this last minute red herring, I'll call it. If you don't want it, then get rid of the TIF. If there's, if I understood it correctly and what I read there is it's illegal to force union wages on a TIF project prevailing wage. If that's the case, why are you even discussing it? Thank you.
Next up, we have Darlene Weber and then to follow Ahmad Mans. And just for sake, sorry, just for sake, we have two minutes left and three more people to speak.
Mayor, city manager and councilman, thank you for listening. In twenty twenty-one, the council members passed a referendum which included installing storm sewers in Taylor and Grant Street. We had tremendous flooding at that time. And they were going to also replace the road at that time. It seems this is no longer happening this year as planned by that council if they're not included in the present agenda, addendum. And if it, the promised sewer and road repair is not done now, it will cost more to you in the future. It seems to be related to the Brick Road just east of Mercer that adds million dollars plus to the project. This brick road is so damaged, I avoid it. Nobody drives on it anymore. Used to be you couldn't take your bicycle on it. Now you can't take your car on it. That section, one block of Taylor increased the cost of the project and it seems like the tail is wagging the dog. Are other residents of Grant and Taylor being punished because of an unreasonable demand of one block residents who love a brick street? We've suffered water damage for fifty-five years in my house. Over fifty-five years now. I appeal to this council to include our streets in the present project. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up we have Ahmad Mans and then to follow Janay Clark.
Hello, my name is Ahmad Mans. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I live here in Bloomington. This is where I was born and raised and I work construction for a living. So I'm here to oppose of the agreement of the coast from property because there's no requirements for use of local construction workers. So every time an incentive agreement comes up, we always see that developers, ones that reach the benefits and not the local workers like ourselves. So right next to the coastal property, we saw the development of the Washington Senior Apartments getting incentives without any requirements to use local labor. So the construction work was done by workers from Indiana, Iowa, Wisconsin and from Texas. And we didn't even get the benefit in our, to work in our own backyard. Um, so, uh, the dollars earned by working, uh, if the dollars earned by working are what recirculate in our economy, uh, in our economy would be much better. So I completed the apprenticeship pro- program. Um, the apprenticeship allowed me to learn a skill in my career that I'm very proud of and passionate of. And requiring that contractors use Department of Labor apprenticeship programs in this agreement will give more workers like myself and others the opportunity to get into the trades and provide for our families. So I'm pro-development. I'm pro-worker. Both of those things can be accomplished, but please vote no to this incentive agreement because there's no requirements for workers like us.
Thank you. How are we doing on time?
So we are at a time, we have, uh, two left.
Yeah, two left. Okay. Do you want to do a motion to extend?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, move by a council member Ward and second by council member Hendricks.
All right. Uh, council member Kearns?
Yes.
Council member Boland?
Yes.
Council member Motney?
Yes.
Council member Danenberg?
Yes.
Council member Becker?
Yes.
Council member Hendricks?
Yes.
Council member Ward?
I.
Council member Crumpler?
Yes.
Thank you. So we're extending by six minutes, I think.
All right. And so next up we have Janay Clark and then the last one will be Serena Fish.
Hello. Thank you for extending the time. Um, my name is Janay and first of all, um, numbers guy that was adding in Rivian employees, they wouldn't be able to afford the apartments that these guys want to build, at least, you know, not until they unionize. So I wanted to point that out because his numbers don't really mean a whole lot. So last month, tabling of this deal, which was definitely the right thing to do, um, that one of the developers spoke to the media and he explained that he's not a wordsmith, that he used the word luxury, but he meant high-end apartments. Well, that is luxury to a lot of people. He also misused the word redemption. I'm not sure what he meant by that, but I think he misused it and he should have said gentrification, which is what this amounts to. Sorry, that's my place. Um, it was pretty embarrassing how everyone backtracked on luxury once they realized how bad it looked. Um, and it still looks bad. That said, um, people are struggling and none of this project does anything for anyone except these guys. except these guys that they want to have it all. They want the incentives, they want the land for free basically and maximum profit, which is what, what they are proposing would offer them. They don't want to pay a prevailing union wage, also because they think that's going to cut into their profits. There's a property that they just finished and it's now renting for an astronomical twenty-eight hundred dollars a month. I don't know the financial situations of everyone sitting here, but I haven't spoken to anyone that doesn't think that's ridiculous. So I don't know how you guys felt about the threat that, oh, if we don't get what we want and you don't require anything of us, we'll just go. Bye. I mean, let them go. There are plenty of people that I am sure would take the opportunity for millions of dollars in incentives, free land, and they also could do something for the community, starting at the bottom up because that's how you build a better community. It doesn't trickle down. It, it's, it's not benefiting people that don't have a voice here. It's benefiting two rich motherfuckers. And, you know, don't do it. Put people above profit. Like, we should be known for that here. Thank you.
Last up for public comment, we have Serena Fish.
I love the man. However, on all the city paperwork, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Serena Fish. And I live in Ward Six, one street off of another ward. Across the street from Miller Park. Unfortunately, we have this problem because unlike other communities around us, north of us, south of us, we as a city are doing well. We've managed to bring people in. We've managed to bring companies in, which means we have more people looking for a place to live. The city needs housing in every spectrum. Lower income, medium income and higher income. It's not just one thing. You have an opportunity to take a piece of property that is dead. It's generating nothing. It has generated nothing for quite a few years. You have a company who's willing to invest their money and come in and revitalize something that's needed in the downtown area. I would hope when we get going that they would hire union. They would hire the best plumber, who probably is a union worker. But the bottom line is you have almost two blocks, I think it's almost two acres, that's generating nothing. And you even have the blessing of the church. And they are paying them for their property, which is going to be part of the new development. All the city website says livable, sustainable city, prosperous downtown. That includes all of us. It includes every color, every race, every income. All of us. So here's one step. You've got low income, Phoenix Towers on this end, Lincoln Towers in the middle, Wood Hill down here. You're surrounded by Section Eight housing. It's time to move up. I hope we can do that with union. I hope we can do it with sustainable. But we need to say yes. And I love this man. Okay?
Thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And I believe that the, there were some minutes that were amended, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. So we, it came to our attention, we have new software, if you've seen some of it in the room. And we have new software that we've been using to pull together our minutes. And an oversight on my department's part, segment from another set of minutes popped in there. So apologies for that. The easiest thing to do was to update the minutes and there was nothing that was material to them. It was just some old history that popped in for some reason. So we did provide to council via email with the help of Deputy City Manager Tyus today, the updated set of minutes, and then there's also a printed copy at the D I S as well.
Okay, thank you. So is there a question?
Are, are these the updated?
Those are the updated minutes.
Okay, I see, I do see still an air on the first page.
Okay.
Ward four says John Branham instead of John Danenberger.
Okay, all right. So what we're doing, do we noted? You don't want another name, Councilmember Danenberger? There you go. I'm not Melissa, so I can't, I can't do that there, but thank you for that. So we'll make that edit. So if, when you consider them, if you would do as amended, and we'll make sure that they're updated accordingly and I'll find eyes on them. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept as, accept as amended. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we're just going to, just for clarification, approval of the consent agenda unless there's something else to be approved with the minutes being as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Becker.
I, I wanted to pull seven J.
Oh, okay. Seven J, as in Jenna?
Correct.
Okay.
And so for the first and second, Boland, would you both accept the pulling of seven J for your motion to be amended?
Oh.
With the, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Should I make a new motion later after or?
No, you're okay. We can approve the consent agenda as is with the minutes approved or amended and seven J being considered separately. Sorry. Just talking so much, I have to get this up to.
I, I can't see all of this. Is that going to come up on the?
Yeah, it's supposed to.
A little problem with the passcode here.
Are you seeing it for a vote now? Did it just come? Is it coming on your end now? Okay, that's okay. I'll just, I'll just do a roll call vote if not, nope. Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote. Councilmember Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Boland.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the item passes. No names to announce, right? So we're going to move on to item seven J as pulled by Councilmember Kearns.
So I just wanted to take a second just to like have a moment to point out this agenda item instead of just passing it on the consent agenda. We, you know, so the, so there's a settlement where we're going to be getting money. It's going to trickle in over time. It's going to, it's going to be probably be beyond money that, money that'll come in probably beyond any of us being on council. Our city manager will probably be different, things like that. And so I just wanted to make sure that the community was aware and of the efforts that have been done and the things that we would like to, that I would like to see moving forward. I guess I'll just speak for myself. That, you know, there, there is money that has been used to help internally with the city with, with fire and police, as I understand it. And then I just want to confirm with the city, I guess, if, if, I think Billy's going to speak on it a little bit about an effort to work with community organizations who this is their space. These are the populations that they serve and to make sure that we're getting this money to the people that need it and the, in the ways that they need it. And so that's what I wanted to make sure that we spoke about.
Real quick, for the community more so, this was a prior conversation that Alder Person Kearns prepped us for. And it was great points in pulling this item. Deputy City Manager Jurgens actually provided some responses. Jeff, if you would, just speak to those, please.
Thank you, City Manager and Council. So over the course of the next eighteen years through these opioid settlements, we're looking to, it's difficult to predict the exact amount, but we believe it's going to be over eight hundred thousand dollars that we collect. We have very limited uses that we're allowed to use the funds for under the settlement agreements. And so we have, our fire department has purchased analytic software to help with responses to overdoses. If approved, this ordinance will allow the city manager to approve other authorized expenditures. The next thing that we're looking at spending some of the funds on is detection equipment so that officers can detect fentanyl in the field, also to help them safely process opioids for evidence and those types of things. Beyond that, to Councilmember Kearns's comment, we will be looking to work with our local agencies and nonprofits to see how we can better serve those that are impacted by drug addiction. With, you know, we're going to receive the funds intermittently over the next several years, so it's difficult to budget for that. But we do believe the next step is to reach out to our nonprofits and our local agencies to see how we can partner with them and appropriately use the funds to potentially increase the services that they're providing. Because there, there are only so much of these funds that the city can, can use. We already have enough Narcan. We've already purchased the equipment that all the officers carry, the, the Narcan shots on their uniforms. We might be able to do some training in the future, maybe some media campaigns. But truly the bulk of this, our next step is to look to see what we can do with our local service agencies to improve those services to the community.
Councilmember Boland?
Oh yeah, I have a question. Did any other government agency like county receive any money?
Yes. Yeah, they did. I believe a lot of local agencies did receive funds. I, I don't know the exact amount, but that, yes, they did.
Okay, because they are, well, they have several programs that, not just the non-for-profits in the community, but.
And that's actually one of the things we're looking at. So, and they're all under the same restrictions. We're all under the same restrictions. But some of those allowable provisions do allow us to fund programs that do certain things. So again, nonprofits, it could be other governmental agencies like the county we're partnering with. We're going to explore all the options and see, see what we can do with the money.
Should that be put in this or not really?
This, the, the ordinance as written allows the city manager to approve settlement funds and also enter into agreements. And that language for agreements was specifically because we do envision entering into agreements with local service agencies, nonprofits, governments, that type of thing.
Okay, see no other question?
No, I was just going to say I would, a motion for this to be approved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Hendricks. Are we? Oh, hey, voila, it worked.
Every once in a while.
Okay. All right, well, the motion passes. There are no names to announce. Okay, so next item on the agenda, we're going to move on to the regular agenda is item eight A, a consideration and action on one, an ordinance amending the budget ordinance for the fiscal year ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four to allocate ARPA funds in the amount of three million eighty-nine thousand and seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and increasing the FY twenty twenty-four general fund budget by seven million three hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight point six-six dollars. And the water fund budget by three million and eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-two cents to sanitary sewer fund budget by two million seven hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-seven point four-two storm water, and the storm water fund budget by two million seven hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-seven point four-two dollars. And the second ordinance authorizing a construction agreement between the city of Bloomington and Stark Excavating Incorporated for the Locust Street CSO elimination and water main replacement phases four and five in the amount of eight million four hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents as requested by the Public Works Department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for an introduction and get some water.
Thank you, Mayor, Council and to the community. This, this agenda item as presented is really an action item from the city council's commitment as it relates to the June twenty twenty-one storms where two phases of this existing project, pre-storm of twenty twenty-one, was already set in motion. But it is a commitment of this council, this previous council and this council tonight that ultimately vote on this, that we are combining phases four and five. To some of the comments that we heard, and there were great comments previously about different sections being taken out of the phase four and five. It was in an effort to save some money. But it does not change the commitment of this council and the ultimate final deadline for the overall Locust Colton project. But it would take out some sections of the phase four and five, which would be completed when we do the combination of phases eight and nine. There's been very good conversation with, with this council. And I think a desire, we're going to see a proposed amendment to this agenda item that we're prepared for. And we've got the Finance Director Scott Rathbun. If we need to walk through the numbers, don't know that that's going to be necessary. We've got Public Works Kevin Cothee that's going to talk through the project. But if you don't mind, I'm going to go to Alder Person Danenberger first. And he's going to shape some of the comments and maybe the presentation that Public Works Director Cothee is going to present. So just hang tight, Kevin, for a minute and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Tim. First of all, I'd just like to thank the residents of Ward Four and specifically East Gate for coming and giving, providing great comment tonight. Both the emails, the calls and the public comment that they gave tonight has been instructive and a good reminder. And to make good on the promise that the, the city council made to the residents of East Gate back in twenty twenty-one, I think I'd just like to make the motion that city council approve the two. I think I'd just like to make the motion that City Council approved the two proposed ordinances with an amendment to the budget amendment ordinance to increase it by additional two-point-four mil- million transferred from the general fund to the appropriate water, sewer and storm funds and an amendment to the, to the bid award ordinance to include the base bid and all three alternates for a total of ten-point-eight million dollars.
I'd like to second that.
So motion by Councilmember Danenberger and not Brenham, and uh, second by Councilmember, uh, Montney. Um, do we have any others who'd like to, to speak, or should we go to Kevin right away? Yeah, okay, all right, doesn't look like there's other comments. Well, let me just take it, is there anybody ready to vote or? Okay, all right, looks like we're ready to vote. Oh, maybe not.
I just have, um, thank you, Mayor, I just have one question. Um, does your proposal restore the um, project to its initial um, structure and funding? That be fair to say?
Yeah, that was, that was the intent. Now, obviously with the timeframe, we wanna get it done expeditiously, uh, within two years, but that may not. That may not happen, and we can't make that promise, but I think what we do is promise the money.
Right, it does allow us to go, to not um, go back on our original promise to do the work that we voted on in twenty twenty-one.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. Already voted. Okay, so the item passes, there are no names to announce. That's the easiest Kevin's had it. Right. Oh yeah, okay, yep. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item eight B, and a presentation and discussion of uh, American Rescue Plan Act socioeconomic nonprofit um, program award recipients and additional program status as requested by the Administration Department and the Economic and Community Development Department. And I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and uh, to the community. Uh, this second item on the uh, regular agenda is truly another victory lap, uh, that this council and community can take. The first one being the item that just was passed, uh, the commitment to the community and um, uh, the amendment, uh, that was just approved, but this right here is uh, council's um, uh, conversation and commitment to a grant program that Melissa Hahn, the Economic Community Development Director is going to speak to very briefly. You will, you will have seen uh, messaging and uh, some of the stuff that we've put out, uh, social media and to the media. And we're gonna be saying the same thing, but this is worthy of sharing this again in this setting. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to uh, Melissa, and before I do that, um, this uh, this pledge and the desires of the council, Melissa truly has done an excellent job of uh, standing up uh, with uh, IT, uh, short-staffed, uh, at the highest levels and truly has turned something around and it's uh, uh, I'm gonna say worthy of applause, but uh, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Melissa, thank you.
Thank you and, and good evening, um, Mayor, City Council and City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity just to give you guys a status update, kind of where we are with the ARPA grant programs. Uh, next slide, please. I wanted to start just for the new council members to um, just give a, a brief timeline, kind of how everything came to be. I didn't start at the very beginning, cuz I know there were some very early on conversations before we got to the December fifth um, ordinance, but that kind of for me is the start of, of when we said, okay, here are the programs, uh, that we're gonna move forward with. So that was approved by council on December fifth, um, and I've got the ordinance number up there in case anybody wants to go back and, and reread it tonight after the meeting. Um, then on April seventeenth, came back and gave a presentation at the Committee of the Whole. Uh, we took that time between um, December and April to get programs, policies, applications, um, all the necessary things outlined as well as pages on the city website, the messaging together, so on April seventeenth, when I gave the um, overview, kind of highlighting the programs uh, purpose and requirements, uh, we also at that ti- that day stood up uh, the webpages, so that provided um, everyone the opportunity to go view the policies, procedures and the application requirements um, for those programs, so anybody that was interested in applying from that point on, um, could see that, we did go back. I think it suggested to one of the council members and provide what those applications were gonna look like as well. So even aside from saying, here's the things you'll need for your application, here is what the, the application template will look like, so people were able to view that as well. Um, then on May first, oh, and then we did send out notification, just wanted to highlight that staff um, did a great job, um, trying to reach as many people as possible. And we sent out uh, multiple times through um, some of our, our gov delivery systems to over twelve-hundred people um, to receive notification of the applications becoming available and then also posting on social media, um, many, many times. And for most of our postings, we were able to, to uh, reach over two-hundred people per post, so really good um, uh, coverage there as far as, as reaching out to people. And then on May first, uh, twenty twenty-three, at seven-thirty AM, uh, all of the grant app, applications were available electronically, and then we also did have the uh, paper applications for the Affordable Housing Rehabilitation Grants um, available at the Government Center for anyone who wanted to come in and, and get a paper application, so those were available as well. Uh, next slide, please. So for the awards so far, uh, we'll start with the nonprofits, um, that was the, the big one for us, uh, as you're aware, um, per the ordinance, we um, we were able to award to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grants, three one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grants. And then with the remaining, we were able to uh, provide that to um, an applicant as well. So we did receive ten, or I'm sorry, we received seven total applications between May first and June fifth. Um, and there were six awarded, so just one that we um, were not able to award because all of the money had been expended. Um, but they, they were coming in um, a- at a good pace and um, we went back and, and had to have some people provide some updated budgets and things. But after reviewing everything, uh, we were able to um, award those for the nonprofits, so as you can see, Project Oz for their uh, youth education and support center, the YWCA for their stepping stones expansion, Home Sweet Home Ministries for their rapid rehousing program, McLean County Center for Human Services, some facility improvements, Salvation Army for their safe harbor integrates, integrated social services, and then the Mid-Central Community Action for their housing stability navigator demonstration program, so overall, um, as you can see, we are helping those that need it the most within the community. Um, next slide, please. For our small business rehabilitation grant awards, so far we've received two applications, two of those have been approved. Uh, total amount of award, a little over seventy-one thousand, uh, one award was for forty-five and the other was for twenty-six. Uh, we've been doing our best to do cross-promoting through other programs, so if we have somebody that applies for the Rust Grant, maybe they don't qualify for that, um, for the improvements that they'll trying to make, so we'll refer them to this program as well. Uh, we have received feedback from um, some of the small businesses that are in the um, qualified census tracts that are, are hoping to apply soon. Uh, we are requiring that they do provide bids for those rehabilitation projects as part of the application um, eligibility process to ensure that they're not asking for funds beyond what would be um, available to uh, complete their project, so as, as part of those uh, qualifying factors, they do need to submit those bids, um, a couple people have just expressed they're having difficulty getting um, contractors to come give them those bids, so we do have some people that are still intending to apply, they just don't have everything that they need at this point to submit their application. Um, so we still have a, over a one-point-three million or approximately about thirty grants left that we could award if we awarded all of them at the forty-five thousand left for this program. Next slide, please. And then for the Affordable Housing Grant Awards, the way that we um, moved this program forward is that we did the pre-application, the reason that we did that is because for most of these programs, we require a lot of information of the applicants as far as eligible, income eligibility and things of that nature, so we did a pre-award application just to make sure they were in that regeneration area as outlined by the ordinance and making sure that, um, you know, we weren't making them uh, go through a more lengthy process if there was uh, an eligibility requirement right off, um, that they would not meet, so of the um, seventeen pre-applications that we received, there were seven that were not eligible um, because they were out of that uh, regeneration area, and so they were referred to um, either the CDBG or IDA program depending on what their need was or is. And then um, of the remaining other ten, eight of those have co- completed the full um, ARPA application or in the process of submitting the rest of the required documentation. And once again, with these programs, we are trying to layer as much as we can, so if they're qualifying for ARPA and they also uh, we can come in and do the lead hazard abatement as well as anything from CDBG, so we are trying to layer that as much as we can for um, those that qualify uh, within the community. And then also, as of June fifteenth, our um, HUD income guidelines are going to be updated, so we're hopeful that this will open um, potentially opportunity for others in the community that may want to apply for these programs. So for, as of um, June fifteenth, our uh, median family income will be adjusted from a hundred and eight thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand. That means for a family of four, at the eighty percent of area median income, they can make up to eighty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year to qualify these programs. So, um, I think as someone mentioned, we, things are going well in Bloomington, but we're hoping with the increase that will also help um, increase those that we can serve, uh, with these programs. Uh, next slide, please. So the um, nonprofit application obviously has closed, all the funds have been allocated. But we do still have the applications available for the affordable housing and the small business rehabilitation grants, and they can be the link can be found right on the front page of the city's website, and then we've got our phone number and um, community development email if anybody needs to get ahold of us for any questions. That's all I have, open it up for any questions.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, Councilmember Ward and then Bullen.
Thank you for this, and it's great to see, see um, how this is being spent, that's, that's awesome to see, thank you. Um, just one quick question, can you remind us, given that there are still funds available for the small businesses and for the um, the housing rehabilitation, broadly speaking, where, what's the, the area geographically that we're talking about?
So for the small business rehabilitation, it has to be within a qualified census tract. And those maps are provided on the website, so if anybody goes and links to the application, you can see in the eligibility criteria. Um, but it kind of surrounds the qualified census tract for the small business encompasses most of the downtown and then kind of south from there, comes out a little bit to the west, but mostly um, downtown and then south. And for the um, regeneration area for the affordable housing, that area is to the west of downtown.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember Bullen.
Thank you, um, thanks for all the work, Melissa, I know this was a long haul, I remember the very beginning, um. I, I'm really glad to see that there's an opportunity for people to age in place in the home that they've been in for a long time, and um, in essence, makes it affordable. If they can't afford to repair it, it's not gonna be nice to live in, and I'm glad to see that there's a program for this, so thank you.
Okay, well, seeing no other questions, uh, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay, the next item on the agenda um, is a consideration and action on an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Bloomington, Illinois and four-two Washington LLC as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. And I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. Uh, this was an action item that was brought before council on uh, May twenty-second at uh, that council meeting. When present, don't mind sharing that COVID finally caught up to me, uh, wish I would have been here, uh, but very much appreciate that uh, council took the action that they did by tabling this item so that it could come back, so that we could have many, many conversations uh, that did occur, uh, starting a couple of days before uh, that May twenty-second uh, date. And then definitely, uh, many that have occurred of, uh, since then. I'm gonna get sidetracked, uh, just for a little bit, then I'm gonna speak, uh, specifically to the agenda item uh, that's before council for approval tonight, uh, which I definitely recommend, uh, approving. And there is no difference in what was presented on uh, May twenty-second, except for the many conversations, uh, that have occurred. Uh, the uh, pledge and the dedication, uh, you know, regardless of how this shakes out tonight, I think what I ask for the most is patience. And if anybody knows me, knows that if I make a commitment to something, I'm gonna follow through with it. And that's exactly what has occurred in all of these conversations. And I definitely have a mayor and a council that are making the very same pledge and commitment to this conversation. And in fact, want to lead of the communities in this region, this very same conversation. But at the very end of all of this, I can't tell private dollars where to invest or how to spend their money. All I can do is pave the way in a process and make sure that this is a welcoming community so that we can continue the successes that we have seen, and I think that there are far more to come. So how are we communicating this to the world that truly is watching us? And I appreciate the participation, and this is not over regardless of what the outcome is tonight. We're going to have a presentation, uh, by uh, Melissa Hahn, the Economic Community Development Director. Deputy City Manager Tyus, uh, also, uh, presented on the twenty-second in Melissa's absence. Uh, I think I'm going to say also regarding getting sidetracked. The passion on this topic, you know, from both sides, I mean, this is exactly how government is supposed to work at the local level. So I actually enjoy this. You know, I, uh, I very much appreciate, uh, the conversations on both sides, which at the end of the day, there really aren't both sides. Uh, so it's exciting from that vantage point for what that's worth. I'm gonna speak specifically to uh, the project and to uh, the agenda item. This is a great project. Uh, this is a continuation of the investment and the development and the benefits to this community that you see right across the street with C two east. You know, for years, uh, beyond uh, a decade. You would drive uh, around Business Fifty-One to northbound and that thing smacked you straight in the face. And we're talking about another project and it came under public comment where as a city manager, when I'm talking about non-governmental buildings, you know, out in my community, the two that I dread the most are old schools and old churches, because they're sold privately, they fall into a state of di- disrepair. And that goes on for decades, it's a nice ore for the community. City gets involved, oftentimes you see code violations, uh, that are enforced, and then what ultimately happens, uh, in a lot of cases, the title falls into the city's hands, and then it's taxpayers that have to pay for the abatement and the demolition of uh, that property. So for that reason, and there's many others, I'm excited about this project. And uh, I think that you've got a group that's very committed to this community. I think that we can have this parallel conversation that's going to occur, as I've given my pledge to those, uh, that I've reached out to. And more importantly, again, it's because the mayor and this council have made it very clear, Gleason, you better figure this thing out, because our phone has rang, we've received emails, and I'm going to. So, in very short order, I plan on uh, having that conversation and making sure that uh, the council has something to consider that they're on firm ground, this is not a conversation that was going to occur between May twenty-second and changes made to the agenda item before tonight on June twelfth, there's just too many layers of the onion to peel back. So don't get the impression that I'm kicking the can down the road, I'm not. I've gotta put these people that make the hard decisions on firm ground and that I've gotta put these people that make the hard decisions on firm ground, and that's exactly what I'm gonna do. I've said this a couple of weeks ago, that this council is, for the first time in my eleven years as a city manager, is going to be faced with far more that's coming at them, high-dollar decisions. You know, how do we preserve the reserves we have? How do we protect the revenues that we receive? And how do we uh actually uh advance uh the infrastructure improvements and the different investments that we're making in a community? It's tough. And this council, this newly seated council, has far more coming at them the first six months than any council that I've ever served. So with that said, I, I don't know if, I mean, the presentation's gonna be exactly what council heard on May twenty-second. I don't know if we wanna hear the presentation again, but I'll, I'll look to council uh and follow your lead.
Sure, I, I think we should probably hear it again.
Could I request a time extension if we're gonna do that?
Oh, sure.
Thanks.
Did I talk too much?
It's okay. It was really helpful.
Okay, how um, how much time? Twenty? Twenty minutes? Okay, alright.
I'll make a motion to extend the time for twenty minutes.
Oh, second.
Okay.
Councilmember Currents?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumpler? Thank you.
Yes.
Sounds good. And could we put the time up on the screen so I can see? Alright. You see? Go ahead, Councilmember Becker.
Thank you. Um, I wanna echo a couple of things that have been said, but maybe in a slightly different way. Um, sorry, I'm gonna take a minute here, but um I'll, I'll try and go quickly. You know, we talk about, a lot of times you hear love and hate are opposites. They're not. The two of them are the opposites of apathy. What we see in this room is a lot of passion. Tim said it, I think Mr. Kaufman said it, we see that passion for the city, and that is awesome. We as council people have been hearing from a lot of you, we've been hearing all sorts of different opinions. And it is our responsibility to listen to all of those and take them into consideration. From my side, I do a lot of workforce development work at, at my other job, my day job. In every one of those conversations, one of the first thing I mention is unions and trades and apprenticeships and how there's a lot of kids accumulating debt in college that should be in the trades, earning a good living and working hard, right? I can take that perspective. I can also take the perspective that, like uh City Manager Gleason said, that private money can choose to spend their money where they want. And both of those are true statements in my mind. I've heard a lot of statements from both directions, from people that are passionate about the city. What I have to do as a city councilperson is I have to sit here and take all of that input and then make a decision that I think will provide the most positive impact for the city. And I think I can't consider who's gonna vote for me next time. I can't consider who voted for me this time. All I can consider is what I believe to be best for the city in this instance. And I think one of our speakers, and I forget your name, you worked for Henson's uh uh back in the back, um, said it very well about nothing happening, nothing happening, and if we set the precedent, we're gonna not have other people invest in downtown, and we're gonna have lots of investments go away that are gonna hurt all of us. I believe there will be union and non-union local labor benefiting from this project. I believe the city will benefit for the project, and I'm just gonna make the motion now that we move and pass this as is. With respect to all the guys here um who voice different opinions, we just need to make that motion now.
I'll second the motion, and I would like to make a comment also that there's a real misunderstanding of TIF and how it works and, and the law behind it. And I think that maybe Patrick Coben can do a workshop one-on-one.
Okay, sounds good, and we have a, a couple of other comments, so Councilmember Ward and then
Thank you.
Councilmember. Or after.
I just actually have a, a clarification. I thought we were trying to decide whether we were gonna have the presentation or not. Is that the case? Because I understand.
Yeah.
I, I looked around, but.
Yeah, I looked around, nobody made a.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll hold off for a minute.
Okay, alright. Councilmember Crumpler?
Um, well, I, I'm curious about protocol. I have a, an amendment to the contract that I'd like to propose, but I don't know if that's, this is the time or if we wanna wait till the end of the presentation. I'll, I'll whatever you would like, Mayor.
Yeah, we're, I looked around earlier for a presentation. Nobody motioned for a presentation. We're, we're going without. I mean, unless, do you want to hear more?
Um, should I go, I'll go ahead and go now, then.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um. This was a really complicated um issue, and I wanna begin by saying I support Catalyst Construction's efforts to build new housing on the former Coachman site, and I see the value um of this project for our community. However, I also support paying a prevailing wage um and its value for working families in our community. Therefore, um, I propose amending the contract um that's currently um in place. Um, and this would be on page five, under obligations of the developer, item H. And I move, we revise the language in two places. First, um the language, I would like the language to read that the developer quote guarantees paying a prevailing wage. And second, I would like to add, the city shall develop a plan to provide financial support for the developer to pay a prevailing wage.
Point of order. That part two, I do not believe is um germane to the um agreement.
And I think it, it's fine. That's your amendment, right?
So. That's my amendment.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have to vote once, if you get a second, then we'll vote on the amendment, and then, okay. Alright.
Thank you.
So then we can go and vote on the um, if everybody's ready to vote on the amendment, we can go and vote on the amendment.
Is there any room for discussion?
Right.
Sure, okay. Do you wanna add more?
My question was related to, I think there was some talk of this amendment coming forward, and, and City Manager, did you speak with the developers related to a potential amendment and whether or not? I mean, if we pass, I appreciate the amendment, and I would be supportive of that happening, but if we do approve the amendment, does that mean that the developers are actually gonna follow through with that and, and, and go forward the way that we may think they or hope they would?
I'll let uh Deputy City Manager Tyus correct me if uh I say this wrong, but I, I would respond this way. That the uh difference uh for a prevailing wage component on this project, the estimate is an additional two million dollars. That would be paid by the city. Taxpayer dollars would be uh what would be used to uh pay that, not the developer.
I have another question.
City Manager, uh Deputy City Manager?
In, if I understood your question, in the event that that was a path to be taken. But my understanding, based on conversation with the developer, is that if this was something that were passed, the developer, it wasn't a threat. It was, it makes the project not feasible to them to do at this point.
Okay. Councilmember Motney?
I just wanted to make a comment about opportunity cost and um really also wanna echo. I appreciate the passion all the way across the board in this. I, I've lived in this community for twenty-two years, and driving by that property, I, I would ask, um, you know, those of you who are here, whichever side you're on, to think of what opportunity cost is. And it's simply the loss of potential gain from other alternatives when one alternative is chosen. And stepping back with this, um, you know, twenty years have passed progressively. And we have someone who has come forward, who is willing to invest there. Um, that individual could have chosen to invest in other areas surrounding our community or in other communities. And I would submit to you, based on just my own analysis, um, that the risk of doing so in this location is significant. Um, it's significant um because it's a unique um development um for reasons that many of our public commentators have said. Uh, but the co-conveyance of belief in this community, in this heart of our community, the icon of our downtown, all of us collectively, I think in our campaigns, spoke about the importance of an icon, a heartbeat of your downtown. And this is someone who has come forward, willing to forego the opportunity cost and to make this recommendation. Considering that from the flip side, the opportunity costs that we are all taking on, should we decide that we are going to mandate prevailing wage? And if it were to be that the proposal is taxpayer money be used to pay that prevailing wage. I mean, let's put that in the context of complaints that we all receive every day. I know I received two of them today, and that is the condition of our roads. And that would represent using taxpayer money, essentially twenty-five percent of the cost of our annual road budget to close that gap. Um, that is significant. How could we explain that to those folks who depend on us for another very important economic development component, which is the condition of our overall infrastructure? We have a lot of needs there that we've heard about recently, roads, sewers, and water infrastructure and so forth. So that opportunity cost as well, how long will it be before another developer comes forward and is willing to build anything there to take on that risk? And seeing, you know, the impact of these conversations and what that takes to have courage when that money, again, could be spent elsewhere. But we have someone who has invested in our downtown already and believes in it and is willing to do so again. Uh, I'm gonna be supporting this uh proposal as written. I believe it just is in the best interest of everyone here in the end. Um, and I understand the, the reasons to the contrary, but having considered everything um and especially as well, the inference that we would close this gap when it is not legally required in the city's TIF program at present by asking our taxpayers to pay the difference. Um, that's, that's really a, a tough pill to swallow.
Thank you, and I'm gonna go to Councilmember Bowlin, Ward, and then Crumpler.
Um, yes, I have a, a few comments. Um, the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act um applies to wages of workers employed in, in in any public works by any public body and to anyone under contract for public works. That's related to the CSO project, the multimillion CSO project. It's, it even says in that development agreement or agreement that prevailing wage will be applied because it's a government um ex-expense. This particular project, every dollar is not one single dollar is coming from the government during construction. The money that is going to be reimbursed to the developer is within state statute that controls TIF districts. I just wanna make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward.
Turn myself off here. Thank you, Mayor. I really want to vote for this project. My experience with this property goes back over two decades when I was a young mother trying to find shelter for another young mother and her child on a cold winter day. Even then, I recognized that this property, the old Coachman, was not just a last resort. And believe me, it was no luxury resort for a family desperate for accommodations. But it was an opportunity waiting for someone to step up with an idea that would benefit the poor and the working people of our community. So I was excited to hear a few months ago that someone, finally, someone was interested in this property. Like I said, I really, really, really want to vote for this project. But when my neighbors elected me to be their alderwoman, they did so to represent their interests. And I am sad to say, I have not yet heard anything that convinces me that the project as it currently stands is in the interests of people either in need of decent, affordable housing or in the interests of the kind of people who need the kind of prevailing wages that would allow them to afford decent housing. Over the years, it has always perplexed me that no one ever seemed interested in developing the property. It was proposed just a moment ago that, or suggested just a moment ago, that in twenty years, no one has stepped forward with a proposal. Over the past few weeks, I have been perplexed why we have not heard more about a previous development proposal that would have created affordable housing and would have been committed to prevailing wages and solid federal apprenticeships. Tonight, I am perplexed why, despite several weeks to consider options since this item first came before council, why there has been no apparent willingness on the part of the developers to move even an inch toward any of the suggestions that would make this project more in line with the values that our community members have articulated so well this evening. Despite being up really early this morning, I know how early these guys get up in the morning. What I am not perplexed about is that it is a word game to imply that tax abatements are not an expenditure of taxpayer resources. What I, what I am not perplexed about is that we can no longer, in good faith, expend taxpayer resources while ignoring the needs of the poor and the working people of our community. What I am not perplexed about is that we need prevailing wage and apprenticeship provisions. We need to standardize them, and we need to start now. What I am not perplexed about is what my voters have sent me to do. And that is why I cannot support this project in its current form and why I am willing to compromise, unlike others, with regard to the amendment. But otherwise, I cannot support this project.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crumpler?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, thank you, Member, Councilmember Ward, for your um comments. I made this amendment because what I've heard from developers, from um constituents in my ward, from um union members, from other council members, um, what an exciting time this is in Bloomington economically. Um, you know, we talk about new companies moving here, we talk about um all the economic development that's really brimming all around our city. And it just seems to me that amending this contract to conclude a prevailing wage could um bring in a new era where unions and the city and the council all work together to try to, to try to re-initiate and, and enrich the values that are important to this committee, just to this community. And that is why I put this amendment forward, not, you know, to um um, use taxpayer money, you know, in, in a, in a negative way, but we talk, but everyone talks about what an exciting project the Coachman is. And let's do it right. Let's get a prevailing wage into the contract so that working And let's do it right. Let's get a prevailing wage into the contract so that working families can benefit the same as the developers. Thank you.
Okay, I think we have Councilmember Kearns.
Yeah, so I guess I just wanted to address everyone. So thinking about it, trying to address our housing shortage as a zero-sum game, I think can lead to unintended consequences of things that are going to hurt us all in the end on both sides of this equation. So the way I'm thinking about it is a win for this project doesn't mean that it follows that it's a loss for affordable housing or that it has to be a loss for the opportunity to have fair and livable wages. A loss for this project then doesn't mean that it's immediately a win for affordable housing or a direct win for the opportunity for projects to pay affordable and living and fair wages, prevailing wages too. So all of this information, the studies I've been, that have been shared with me, the facts and the data of everyone who's reached out to me, leading up to the previous meeting today, leading up to today, you know, over the past couple of weeks, leading up to today and in today's meeting, tonight, everything that everyone has said. I think in many ways confirms what I think we're all going for, like the being pro-development and being pro-worker. So I am committed to tackling our housing shortage and affordability issues and finding ways for more affordable housing projects to come forward. Just because we vote for, you know, let's not mince words, this is a luxury development. That doesn't mean there can't be affordable developments. It's not either or, it can be both. And I also remain committed to working with city staff on language. I think, I think Tim was alluding to it. That I'm, I'm committed to having two winners in this equation. It doesn't have to be either or. And that's what I'm committed to doing. I guess I have a question for Tim. I don't know how much you're willing to say, but you know, I'm committed to not, you know, like moving forward, we have, you know, like we have to address these issues that are coming and the desires that we're hearing from our community and from our, from our council. So what can you commit to? What is, are you willing to say when it comes to prevailing wage or, or language of the other issues that they've mentioned in terms of apprenticeships and things like that?
Putting me on the spot. I think I said, and I'm not reluctant to say this, but I would ask that please don't hold me to just the things that I'm going to throw out here. Please do hold me to the commitment that this is going to be a conversation for council. But when I, I think I said, you know, peeling back the layers of the onion, you know, when we talk about a project labor agreement or prevailing wage, and I think my focus is more on a project labor agreement is what I'm hearing. And it's, it's not that simple. You know, I've got developers that are saying, I try to use union, union labor and can't, you know, union labor doesn't necessarily sharpen their pencil. They're pulled in other directions, their work sites and other locations. I don't know if that's true, but I got to check, you know, before I put something in front of council. I also have private contractors that say we don't get credit for the amount of union labor that we actually use. So that's another area that I've got to run this down and check into it. You know, when we talk about investing, you know, potentially taxpayer dollars to close a gap, if we were to come up with some sort of agreement that's different than what we have today. I know that I've got a mayor. I know that I've got a council that is committed to having this conversation and leading this conversation that has been stalled for a variety of reasons for quite some time. That day is here. I guarantee it. And what council ultimately adopts, you know, will be something that will occur, you know, maybe not a spring conversation, but we're not going to push it off to 2024. I can't. You know, I've got my marching orders already. You know, when we talk about our expectations of labor, you know, are, you know, we just did adopt a minority business enterprise. You know, we have a commitment to diversity where our organization and the things that we impact are reflective of the community we serve. We're committed to that. So when we talk about potentially investing taxpayer dollars into the trades, what should our expectation be, you know, in apprenticeship programs? Should we expect a higher minority participation in the trades? You know, a lot of people that currently live in the community provide them opportunities. You know, when we talk about, and I'm going to shift slightly because Alderperson Kearns sort of commented, she didn't sorta, she has commented to this and, and conversations, you know, outside of this public setting. You know, when we talk about affordable housing, how do you do that right? And I'm being serious about this. So if you incentivize private investment to certain zip codes in the community and try to develop low to moderate income and it's in the private hands, one of the things that you have to guard against is you push out the segment of your community that you're so desperately trying to help. Some communities adopt that they control everything to the point that you're actually handing over a title. You know, basically serving as the bank. There's just so much that needs to be explored before I can have that conversation with my council. And I'm not going to lie, I'm going to prep them in three-on-ones before we have a public conversation. Not to lack transparency, but just to prep and clean up what's going to ultimately play out as likely a committee of the whole conversation, you know, before it becomes an action item of some sort. So I don't know if I answered your question, but I'm going to say, yes, I'm committed to this.
Was that everything? Thank you. Councilmember Hendricks.
So we are still, we do still have the amendment up, right? I'm going to make comments to both. The first on the amendment, while I very much support the efforts that I think that Councilmember Crumpler is attempting to do, I don't think that us passing that language is going to resolve the issue with this current developer. So I'm going to vote no to the amendment, only because I don't think that it really changes unfortunately, what we're attempting to do. So it's not a no to prevailing wage, it's a no to what I think is our attempt to do something that won't actually be fruitful. But I also wanted to give my comments, since obviously this is within Ward Six and is super important to me. And at the last meeting, I strongly supported tabling this item to give more time to work out the details and to give the community more time to provide input as Councilmember Ward also stated. Since then, I have been contacted by many, 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 many constituents. And my vote tonight is in recognition of those contacts. I was elected to be a representative of my ward and a representative of those who elected me and helped me to take on this immense responsibility. And for that reason, I'll be voting no as the plan currently stands as well. I hear those concerns for prevailing wage and local labor and affordable housing, and I'm compelled to represent my constituents on those concerns. That being said, I also have personal thoughts that, that I have thought about for weeks and weeks and weeks. Number one being that we do need housing, which we hear all the time, and we, we have to find a way to fill all housing. Yes, affordable housing is so important, but we need all housing. And from many, many studies that I read, there is a chain effect between building any type of housing, leading to kind of a ripple effect to affordable housing as well. So we need to start supporting all types of housing if we ever want to get out of the shortage in this decade, which I have concerns about. But hopefully maybe sooner. Number two, even though I'm voting no to this plan as it currently stands, I am still 100% pro-downtown development. I'm sure I'll hear backlash that I'm not, but I am. I feel that we've hit a hiccup with this particular aspects of the proposal. But I, I do think we can find ways to come together, find areas of compromise on both sides, which are going to be extremely important moving forward to help, you know, fully revitalize our downtown. And then finally, I want to see more communication. I think what, what I experienced somewhat during this process is that we need to have, and in some ways did, but maybe we need to do more, have developers, local labor, and the city all come together to find those areas of compromise so that we can continue to push projects forward and not stall them. I fully believe and trust our city manager when he states that there is going to be a proposal coming soon, which is a first for the city. And I think that that should be recognized as well, that we will have language hopefully in the future. And I'm hopeful that that will help to resolve these, these issues well in advance and not lead to, as much as I love you all being here, but not leading you all to need to show up tonight and, and voice all of these concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So seeing no other comments, I think we can vote on the amendment. And Councilmember Crumpler, would you remind us on your amendment? Sounds good. So can I go ahead and vote? Okay, so the motion fails and there are five nays to announce.
Councilmember Kearns, Councilmember Bowlin, Councilmember Montney, Councilmember Becker, Councilmember Hendricks.
Okay. So now, no, we still have the other motion on the table that I think it was Councilmember Becker who made the original motion to approve as presented, and then Councilmember Bowlin had seconded. Okay, so are we ready to vote? On this one or, because it looks like it? Okay, so there are five yeses and three nays, so the motion passes. And Madam Plurk, would you announce the, the nays?
Councilmember Hendricks, Councilmember Ward, Councilmember Crumpler.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to add a nine, city managers discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and council and to the community. I think I have two slides. And I'll just pause a second. First slide, July 1st, Friday, Route 66 celebration. It's on July 7th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. downtown. Next slide, Catherine. Free concert, July 15th, Saturday's on the square, Dan Hubbard, full band show with Caleb Brown. And what's the times on that? I can't see it. Seven, seven in the evening on July 15th. And I think that's it on slides. The only other thing that I'm going to add this evening, I know it's been a little bit longer night, but I don't want to miss an opportunity to present and recognize our new corporation council. Chris Spanos was hired to the position and started today. I told him we had an easy meeting tonight, so why don't, why don't you start today? But Chris, and I'm going to turn the floor over to you, so you got about 30 seconds to think about what you're going to say. But excited about this hire. Everyone's aware that council approved my request to create a second deputy city manager, promoted former corporation council Jeff Jurgens into that position. Chris Spanos was with the state attorney's office here in McLean County. Has private sector experience, has practiced law there. Has tremendous experience in the public sector and true, true tremendous opportunity for, hopefully he agrees for him. But definitely a great opportunity for us. And he just, you know, glutton for punishment, but he just finishes an MBA at the University of Illinois and graduated a couple of weeks ago, so he's got that component as well. I'm going to say he's more than just an attorney. So Chris, did I give you enough time to prep? But welcome aboard. Truly excited about this.
Thank you very much. And I will demonstrate my good sense by simply saying we've been here for two hours and five minutes, and the last thing you want to listen to is a lawyer, a microphone, and a captive audience. I look forward to getting to know all of you soon. And my door is always open, my phone's always available. Please call me if you need something. Look forward to working with you.
Okay, sounds good. And their mayor's comment, I know the hour is getting late, so we're, we're going to move on again. I want to say congratulations to Chris and welcome. You just don't know what you got yourself into. And the, the other thing that I wanted to mention, I definitely appreciated the discussion today. And, you know, yes, true, a lot of, a lot of passion, but I, I think it doesn't have to be a, you know, a lose-lose situation. You know, and City Manager Gleason and myself have had conversations about this and definitely committed to working with our, what I would call our partners within the labor community so that we can put together, and you know, an agreement that would lay the foundation for not only consistency but also for, for folks, you know, who are coming to, to to, to invest in the community, to know what the rules of the game are. So you do have my personal commitment, wanted to say it publicly to, to make that happen. And we, we, I and also I know the council will hold the city managers' feet to the fire to make sure that this, this indeed happens. Because it's been, you know, a number of years that we've, we've heard that, but now I think is, is the time to, to, to really put that issue to, to rest and, and, and find a common ground. And I, and I believe that we can, we can find common ground if we, we work together. There's a lot, I, I think, a lot of people are looking at the community. You know, people who, you know, we've had conversations with, you know, several of them. And I think, you know, we are poised for even more growth where everyone will be able to, to, to benefit from it. But again, just want to reiterate my, my commitment to, to this process. With that, I'm going to turn it over to city council members to see, Councilmember Hendricks, Councilmember Crumpler.
I'll be brief. Today I had the opportunity to attend a day camp that is hosted by the McLean County History Museum. They host two different sessions, one in June and one in July. I think their spots still open in July for fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. Today's theme was advocacy day, in which they talked to the students about how to advocate for change in their community. And I was lucky enough to be invited to speak with them about the work that we do on the city council. And then after that, they walked around downtown and gathered signatures for a petition that they came up with related to wanting to see more green space downtown. And so they went to a lot of different downtown business owners. We actually ran into the city manager and the deputy city manager, Tyus. And they got 34 signatures and I promised I would present them to the mayor for his review. So it was awesome. I teach high school seniors government. And they unfortunately do not have a lot of advocacy for much. So to see fourth and fifth and sixth graders really passionate about something was super cool.
All right, awesome.
Councilmember Crumpler. I'll also be brief. I attended the ceremony for dedicating a patriot grave marker honoring Revolutionary War soldier David Haggert at the Evergreen Cemetery on Sunday. He is, far as I know, the only revolutionary soldier to be buried in Bloomington. It was a great opportunity to learn about his life and role in, in local history. I met a couple of his descendants. I got to listen to Julie Emig, director of the McLean County Museum of History. And I also noticed that Councilmember Kearns and Mayor Melo Wambi were there. I mean, it was just a really interesting experience, and it was an honor to be invited. Thank you.
I mean, it was just a really interesting experience, and it was an honor to be invited. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think we do not have any other comments, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, we are adjourned. See you next week.